Mr. Chairman, we're left.
Okay, welcome back everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. We're at our 11 o'clock agenda item. This is an action item. This is an approved agreement with, excuse me, Clearwater Financial for relocation and building planning service. As everyone knows, the county has purchased the title company and we need to figure out the best layout and the best way to use that facility in the old courthouse. And that's what this contract is going to be for is relocation and planning. The cost, the bid cost from Clearwater is $25,000. I'm just looking at things that they don't do and they don't do traffic or parking analysis. I don't know if that's important or not.
I didn't think it would be important because we're already got Toby Olson working on all of that. And when we do the bottom section or the fairgrounds, you know, the redo of that, we can look for traffic flow. There's really only one way between the emerit title building and the fairgrounds. So as far as traffic flow, you already have what you have basically. I mean, we can look at, Toby's already looked at it as far as the new parking lot to the west side of the building. So we just don't know that.
To the west or to the north?
Well, it's kind of.
Is it between the highway and the building?
Yeah. And then just up a little bit so there will be a little bit on the northwest corner. We'll bring some pad in there, but. And then the only thing that this doesn't do, this is going to hire the architect, but then we are going to have to have construction drawings after the architects takes a look at it. The architect will need to be onsite. So it's going to cost us a little bit more for construction drawings at the end of the day and to do a project overview, they can give us a cost of what, whatever it is they're going to propose to be a part of this. And then this allows Clearwater to start meeting with employees and department heads and find out exactly the needs for their departments. The cover sheet says 25,000, but technically it's 25,750.
I think this is great because this will kind of allow an outside perspective on who should stay and who should go and where and when, all that stuff. And that will take some of the heat off of us making that decision or certainly help.
That will give us an actual overview of what can fit in that building, so.
So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the agreement with Clearwater Financial for relocation and the building planning services for the title company.
And I will second that.
Who can second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Doug, thank you. I didn't do the cover letter and I totally, ugly.
I don't.
I don't even know how to do that.
Okay, we're going to keep right on going today. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a presentation from Road Department Engineer Dan. Jeff, welcome you guys, come on up.
Welcome, a good timing.
Yeah, very good timing. Thank you commissioners. Got a couple of action items here for you. These are two items for signature. One is a warranty sales agreement for two of our graders to extend warranties on our graders and. This is just for an extension for a five year.
I think it's a three year, three year warranty. These machines are out of warranty. We figured since we're keeping them, we ought to spend a small amount of money to.
I have to actually look at this. It's two year.
Oh, two year.
Two year warranty, 1,000 hour for.
So if you can get.
So the cost is.
Did we get that, Dan?
Yeah. 7282.
Yes, we did too.
7282.
And the other one's a little bit.
So we're looking at around 15,000 for two of them.
For two of them, yeah.
I'm just going to write that in my notes. For great, two graders?
Two graders.
That makes sense. I don't know what it cost us if we had an issue and a kind of warranty, so.
I don't know if you're getting by the tires for 7,000 anymore, can you?
It won't be in a warranty, but what's warranted that.
Hey, so we got a, this is the next item, so we need a motion.
For signatures, yeah.
Yeah, for signatures.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the warranty agreement with Western State's CAT on two graders, your 2017, to extend warranties for two years.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Before we do this again, would you guys do a calculation of some kind on, we just spent $15,000. What is that warranting? I mean, for two years, it's not a very long warranty. I mean, what, what would be the largest hit if something were to go out?
You guys sign right here.
Give you an idea, we just put a new.
Yeah, your road department.
Out of warranty by 18,000.
Reason is, I was told I was.
Oh, okay, good to know.
I can sign it if you give me the authorization, authorization to sign it.
So Chair, could you amend your, what are you going to do this? Need to give Dan authority to sign these. I signed actual contract.
But, I mean.
I don't have any signing authority as, as I was told I brought it.
So you're signing them as the road division.
See, they have one spot for the road department and then where we sign this actual contract.
Got it?
And then there's another one back here on the second one accord.
Those are the two.
Unfortunately, there's not an action item to give you that authority. We need to amend the agenda to put an action item on to do that. Doug, can we go back and amend it this moment?
What you guys are approving is the first matter on the agenda, correct? The sales agreement with Western State's CAT?
Yes.
It's not really a sales agreement.
It's a warranty extension.
Warranty extension. So, okay, so I'm going to amend my motion. It is an action item that we sign it. So I'm going to amend my motion, Doug, to approve the warranty agreement with Western State's CAT for two graders, 2017, and approve Dan Coons to sign for the Valley County Road Department as the division lead.
On the specific items?
We have, we have a process that's in place that we are working on to give you guys my.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so you're going to do this one too?
Doug, we probably should meet on that other document we're working on. Do something. Did I put that on an agenda now that I think about it?
I don't know where.
I don't know what I'm doing anymore.
Hey, thank you. I'll go ahead and, since I've got the authority, I'll sign them, execute them. The second item on the agenda is, this is the Epstein Bridge. It is the final document to certify the right of way has been purchased. The last part of the document, though we're not going to do any eminent domain, I was told it has to be signed. And therefore I'm bringing it to the commissioners for signatures. This is Epstein Bridge. The last page on it says part three, owner's certification regarding eminent domain. It's not applicable, but there needs to be a signature on it. So.
Is this for the federal agency, correct?
This is for, yeah, federal agency.
It's for the EDA.
I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty typical for, for federal agencies to require that there's certifications in place for right of way purchases. It's unusual for me to have something signed that is not applicable.
So do you put NA on it or?
I just put it, I'll put NA on it and we just sign it and then, and then it will be approved. I think I've got the chairman's.
Yeah.
Name associated with just owner's signature.
Owner's certification regarding eminent domain.
You can, you can note on item three, I filled that in, that says NA. So that's what they required.
So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we sign part three, the owner's certification regarding eminent domain for the Epstein Bridge. And we will not be using eminent domain.
I will second that.
Good motion, second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I gotta get one of those. Those are nice.
Everybody should have one. You can have this one.
And all the responsibility that goes with.
That would be a good idea.
And all.
This one's coming home with me, I hate to say it.
I'd better be destroyed.
But you better get one coming here pretty quick because you're going to need it. So that's done.
I want my signature on a stamp. I think I'd rather just sign everything.
It's part of my.
I was in banking, I used to sign that.
Doctor's signature.
Oh.
What else you got?
So, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of updates in regards to, in discussions with the new grant writer, Ken. And I have been corresponding and Jeff and I have a meeting with him on Thursday to go over any grant right, writing that we currently have, anything in the future. In, in fact, I have that S Bridge grant that was, I just received a email in regards to this from LTAC indicating that they want to get it on the tip over at ITD. So it's a part of the overall tip program. And so this will be a feasibility study for the S Bridge. Anticipate that to be approved to the board on October, I think is what they indicated. So that's the start of the process. So what we'll end up doing is working with LTAC in regards to, you know, they're going to be the ones administering it based on a lot of push from FHWA. They would prefer LTAC to administer these. And then we, they, we as a collective, the county, LTAC, will work together in selecting a consultant for that. So that's, that's coming up.
Yay, that's good news.
Yeah. In the, so you know about the Epstein Bridge? The hope is, once we get this to EDA, the folks there with federal government, we need to start getting this in the process of advertising it. So we're, we're in that mode. This was, this is the last hurdle to get everything collected so that we can go out for advertisement.
Dan, is there a match with this LTAC grant?
This is not an LTAC grant, this is.
This is an EDA.
Isn't there usually a 20%?
It's tied to FEMA.
Oh, okay.
Or another, it seemed, seemed like there was 20% on it.
That's what I thought.
20% on that one?
And we've got that in your budget?
It's noted, it's noted on there.
We're probably years out still.
Yeah, this is just to start to pedal down the hill.
Yep. The second advertisement that we are currently in the process of is Profile Creek Bridge. That, if you recall, that was a. The advertisement came in, was it last year?
Advised for it last year.
Yeah, and we, we, the bids, the one bid was pretty high, so we went ahead and modified the Profile Creek advertisement to extend it for two years in the hopes that the prices will get adjusted on that. So that's currently out there for advertisement.
We've already bought the bridge, correct?
The bridge, yeah.
Bought it, but we haven't gotten reimbursed for nothing yet, so.
Doug had a really good thought this morning though, that they were out right in the middle of it right now with trying to clear people out of back country. That might be a good thought, trying to get it done.
Well, and I'm just wondering, you know.
Where's fires start?
If we go out with that, and I don't know what the RFP says, but there might be a way that we may have to get, in an emergency situation, get people out of there. If we do get another fire, which has started last night in Ed- near Edwardsburg, Logan Creek. And Logan Creek is all little tiny.
Yeah, that ain't good a spot.
And that's going to be a huge hot fire if it gets going in there. They're out today flying it to see exactly where it is, but. It's just something to keep in the back of your mind, but they can always go out Smith Creek and help quick someone get out that way too. So fortunately, we got an ingress and negress there.
And we currently have the new building being advertised. We have a onsite pre-bid meeting tomorrow at 10:00 with potential contractors. I believe I talked with Dana, who's our architect, and I think he said there were six contractors.
Six, great.
Six contractors. And they, I asked him specifically, are these all prime contractors? He said yes. So that sounds good for us. And then it sounds like we will have a, the bids will come in on the week of the 25th or on the 25th. And then we'll make the, the, I'm sorry, the architect to review those bids and then once he says they're all favorable and indicate which one is the recommended low bid on it, that will be on the meeting for the September 30th. So we'll, we'll present that at that time.
Good, good. So we're getting close.
We're getting close.
Good news.
Finley Creek. Probably remember this when I first started. We're still in the process of, of answering some of the questions with IDWR, responded to those comments last week. I'm hoping that some, sometime this week, I'll hear back if there's any additional items. And I think the course was okay with the permit, but I don't know if we've received the approval yet on that. So we're crossing our fingers that we get the.
Is that road still closed?
Yeah, it's still closed. I'm very nervous, and so is Jeff, that if this goes through the winter and we have another spring event like it was, the other two will be gone.
I think just double that off, the other two will be gone.
So it's, it's, it's really low right now when we, the last time we were out there, so it's probably not a big deal, but once it gets into the higher flows, it will be a problem.
Basically got the month of October, that shit.
You know, have you guys thought about just going ahead and putting in a new culvert?
I've got the new culvert sitting there and everything.
So as soon as you get your permits and you're going to put that in.
It'll work.
Okay.
We've got everything. It's just a matter of getting the permit approved.
Good.
Now, this is probably a little outdated, but it's relevant for, for now, is the Four Corners. The Four Corners permit, I submitted the, there were a lot of questions on the permit application, submitted that quite a few weeks ago and followed up with the, the, I'm trying to remember the guy's name.
Was that on the five culverts?
These are, yeah, these are the culverts along West Mountain. It was identified to be improved, like to try to, because of all of the fires that are happening, which probably will expand that even more. But the hope is that I could get confirmation from, from them this week. Last week, the individual was National Guard weekend or?
Two weeks probably.
Two weeks. And so I'll hear back hopefully this week about if there was any more additional comments on, on those permits. And then I'm getting more familiar with the iWork program. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's, I think we'll, we'll be using that quite, quite extensively as I move into the winter, get it more developed. And what I'm, I'm getting some training on with the iWork folks. And it has an ability to provide this information to the public, so the public could get access to it.
Nice.
What I'm hoping is it would answer a lot of the questions as long as it's updated, as long as it has a plan associated with it. It also will provide the connection with the development community in, in the idea that if they're developing in, in, along any of our routes that need improvements, they would see that and know what we anticipate in terms of future development. So it kind of, it kind of has a ability to, to, to provide that information as long as we keep up on it. And so that's my, that's my hope is get more educated to how those inner workings with iWorks for just the pavement signing program, but also how it goes into the public website program so that we can, they can see it online as well. So we're working, just this morning, we, we talked about SOPs, standard operating procedures, and coming up with a manual associated with this. And we're starting to put our heads together in regards to sections of what the SOPs will have and administrative section, financial section, operational section, and engineering right now is what we've talked about. And then we'll drill down to the specifics of each one of those and have other finite, detailed subfolders of those.
Will it have sticky notes with Jeff's handwriting all over?
Well, no. This is going to be.
On my whiteboard.
This is on his whiteboard. So when we brainstorm and we talk about SOPs and, oh, this might be a good one, so we're just going to write it on the, so at least we'll have a, and it's going to be a living document as soon as I'm.
I love it. Be still my heart, we actually have something written down for operating procedures.
Well, we're, we're getting there.
Get it out of here.
We're getting there, so we'll.
Get a hammer.
So. No, no, Jeff was going to talk about what's happened with the crews just on the roads, so, yeah. So that's pretty much mine.
Question, follow-up question. So I think it was before you even came on, we met with ITD on the Shaleen, Shaline, however you want to say it, road on that intersection. I can never remember.
He was here.
Too many people say it.
Already.
I'm sorry, what?
He was here employed, but he was on vacation.
Reapproved. So anyway, ITD asked us to design what that intersection could look like and so that we can work with ITO Power on if we want that site. And we're going to run out of time here with ITO Power. They're moving power lines along that corridor right there. And they want to know how we want that intersege, intersection structured.
Okay.
Jeff was there. ITD was actually willing to potentially take that S, little S curve out of there.
Dip out, that's.
Yeah, if we could take the dip out, kind of redo that whole area right there so that we could come up with some left turns, right turns.
It's going to take a lot of material to fill that hole.
ITD would be on it for that, but.
Who's the lead over at ITD? Maybe I can, you know?
Binstrom Bulley was the one that we were talking with, but the district three engineer would also be a good one. I don't, I don't remember the, oh, who's the district three engineer now? I don't remember what guy left.
Oh.
Is he there? The two local foremen's for the two districts here.
At Kreisenbeck. I don't know if Matt was there or not, but yeah.
There was another person there.
Wasn't Brian?
Well, Brian's just the local foreman. And the local foreman had a new house because that's right where their two jurisdictions split, line and Patty Flat.
So we do need to, you know, have you get on that maybe? They were asking for a design from us and I figured that would be something.
Get them to put that pole way back on that corner.
So we have to make sure they're, like Sherri said, they're getting ready to redo all those poles, do their lines and they want to make sure if we're going to do something.
Where is it going?
Move them back far enough to accept that.
And I think I remember Reed, somebody said they would do that, but they just need to know.
And we, you know, the county, if we're looking at long-term, that intersection is going to become more of a major collector and take another direction. Instead of going downtown Donley, you could take Norwood out, go up Shaleen and actually hit the highway right there.
Yeah, so that has the bridge right over there.
Yeah.
There's a little lake for a creek right there.
That would be the, that's kind of like the only bridge crossing in that area.
Exactly. That's the second route or well, maybe third route out of Timmera. So if you're rebuilding the S Bridge, that's going to be one way out to the highway.
Smiley has the bridge, doesn't it?
It'll be the main way.
Smiley has the bridge on it, doesn't it?
Yeah, but to get to that, if we, the S Bridge, something happens to that, they got to drive up West Mountain all the way to Smiley, which that's not a very good route.
It's not a good route.
Right.
Couple of three things that I've been thinking about and I don't, I haven't even read it by Sherri yet or Doug, but I think we need to think about paving the recycle center, entrance and exit, and maybe even in front of your shop. I'm getting a lot of calls from people complaining about the entrance to the, and we shouldn't, I don't know if we have funds and it's all a waste or not to do that, but you know, put it on your burner. And then the other one, I wanted to compliment you guys on how well Cobarton Road South is from Clear Creek into the turnoff to the lake. I drove it last night, great road, there's no potholes, there's no washboards. Whoever's been taking care of that road, it's in awesome shape. Yeah, from McGregor's North.
The fire guys.
Well, who's been blading it?
Fire guys.
They're doing a great job because.
They're hired.
Yeah, and I really.
Thing is, they're doing it every three days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do it once a month.
Can we put a product down on it to seal it?
The, the priority on that, we might have to spread the, the time out a little bit more.
But I really think that down the road, that's going to be a main thoroughfare for a lot of folks coming into the valley.
That's a major, major rebuild on that.
And I don't really want it personally because it splits my ranch again with another road, but it is what it is.
Those are the ideas for brick grants though. I mean, for any kind of a transportation safety grant, anything that we can do to try and get other corridors opened up, that's where our grant writer needs to spend some time. What can we do? That's building infrastructure. I mean, those brick grants should be, they're trying to build resilient infrastructure. That's another quarter. That's right. That should be another access point to West Mountain without having to go through.
It's really busy.
Ask Gator Donley.
Are you going to be here for the, the development agreement for, what was it? Lake, yeah. Because I have some issues on the 20 lot before everything kicks in.
I, you know, yeah, so that was.
We need to talk about that during that one.
I'm hoping that will be a part of the discussion because that's really going to be, you know, what you guys will.
I don't, I'm not really excited about that either, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just, I think as we talk about it, you know, timelines of everything is, all best intentions are that it's going to happen right away, but sometimes the inevitable happens and it takes a while.
And looking at the cost to redo some of that, I don't think is that much. It's not a hard ask for the developer, but.
Yeah.
I think we need to move it up a little sooner. We'll talk about that on that when we get to it.
Okay. Any other questions? Did you want to talk about the?
I can just give them a quick update on the ride on.
I think it's going to be an ongoing conversation about fire and where the culverts are going to need to be. I was talking to Juan earlier. My concern is, is next year if we have floods and everything from these fire scars, that people are going to get hit.
Yep. Yep. We've been talking about this morning. I mean, once, once things get kind of settled down from these fires, Juan will put together all county, just like we did on the Four Corners, sit down and identify which culverts, how much for each culvert, come up with that dollar amount and then. We got to get the fire out first before we do anything.
Yeah, and the way it's, we got another day like yesterday, it ain't going to be pretty. It's not pretty right now.
No.
And tomorrow's going to be like yesterday.
Yeah, the problem is tomorrow. Yeah, the problem is tomorrow, the wind's gonna be coming from a different direction. It's a cold front, so the wind's gonna be coming from that way, not that way.
Down the hill and south.
Gonna be blowing it, yeah, this way.
Yesterday at my house, you could actually breathe and see the...
Well, that's what Round Valley was, it was like...
This is great!
This is the nicest day we've had in a year and a half, except for this giant monstrosity smoke cloud going across the...
Rain and ash.
Cascade in McCall.
Hey, what do you got?
Uh, just real quick, so we got all the, uh, contract paving done by Subert, um, finished pay, paying them this go-around. Um, Dan was holding some money back for, just to make sure we had all the testing requirements completed. That's done, uh, my crew's done paving, uh, we're out-shouldering everything right now, starting wagon wheel, that's done, Hill House is done, starting at West Four, East Four Lane, working our way north up through some of the other stuff we've paved, contractors have paved, uh, I got blade out down here, working north, I gotta blade up north, heading south, trying to get things shaped up, I got patch crews out.
So when you're blading, are you using the water trucks, too?
Oh, we have to, you can't, you can't blade without a water truck.
That's what I thought, I knew that you had some down, so everything's back up and going.
That's why I only have two graders running, 'cause I only have two water trucks.
When do you get your other water trucks?
Huh?
Didn't we approve a new purchase? They, how far out are they? I thought we approved...
No, we, we put it in the budget to...
We surplus two old ones.
We surplus two old ones.
That's what it was.
Been out of commission for two or three years.
Okay.
We got ten thousand out of the first one, and we're up to about five thousand on the second one, and it ends tomorrow, but it's not, it's in worse shape than the first one, so we'll take what we can get out of it.
Yeah. If you recall, we requested it out, outside of the capital improvement, uh, program because of, of problems that we were, we're seeing in the other pieces of equipment. I thought it would be a good idea to at least get that ball rolling, so that we could get them, you know, another water truck.
So we'll have three, if we have to purchase.
We'll, we'll be back up to four, but right now, I've got one that, that's totally broke, and the other one, we're kinda saving in case something happens to one of these other ones, and it's not in real good shape. Our newest water truck is a nineteen ninety-three, ninety-one?
Jeff, another dumb question by me, but how hard is it just to take that tank and put it on another truck?
That's not just a tank, we, our, all of our trucks run on live, live hydraulics, got a hydraulic pump in the front of the motor. They're old plow trucks. Last one we got out of California was, came with a PTO on it, and that's kinda what, it's allowing us to look at different options, but I've been skimping, trying to find used stuff under fifty thousand dollars, and it's, doesn't work on a water truck.
So the other guys working on it?
It's time to buy a new one.
So this eighty thousand will get us a pretty nice one that should last a long time.
You've got a couple graders out, you got some guys doing the road, or the sideboards or whatever that is.
One in Boulder.
Yeah. Is that taking everybody?
Yep.
Or else you have guys?
Yep, I've got a few guys off, did a little reorganization a couple weeks ago, so I've got a couple guys off, just getting rid of comp time, um...
Just looking at some of the potholes that are around, but...
I've got two patch crews out.
Okay, you do.
One started down here in Clear Creek last week, working north, I got one in McCall, working south, I think I've had the Lakeport guys working on the section between Roseberry and the highway today.
Vision is, in, I mean, the city just redid their section, I don't know where we take that one on, but there's some big holes on it.
Yeah, that's just, that whole road's, we, we've looked at a lot of this stuff, I've been, I've been taking Dan on a couple, three tours every, every week, took him into High Valley last week, never been up there, so...
Not gonna be there much longer if that fire doesn't stop.
Well, it's north of...
It's already north of...
That wind changes direction, it's, I mean, the lava fire's almost due west of Boulder, but if, it can easily grow back that way.
Twenty-one last night, they, they touched each other.
They what?
They touched each other.
Well, yeah.
They came over the top and they're touching each other.
Yeah, and it depends on which website you look at.
Yeah.
I've got some pretty cool drone footage from Round Valley yesterday, and it's just, I haven't seen nothing like this since nineteen ninety-four, when the chicken complex was burning everything north of McCall.
What are we doing to prep for winter? I mean, you guys have got all the...
That's what we're working on. Or, I mean, these blades, I've got them instructed to get the road shaped up for winter, get them crowned, make sure there's no ruts in them, because who knows what's gonna happen here in the next month, we might make it back to them again, we might not. Backcountry, I got a blade and a camper sitting at Deadwood Outfitters, gonna say let us in, we're gonna grab it, head down Johnson Creek one more time with it, and then come back out over Lake Creek.
SRS funds are being discussed as part of the ag bills, and hopefully by the end of December, we will have some kind of a coordinated bill to pass. Right now, we don't have any of those funds for next year's budget until we get that approved, so praying that that makes it through both these revisions out of the Senate and the House.
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys are on top of it.
Yep, yep, we're, we're meshing pretty good.
And I appreciate the fact you guys are working together with Okcinda on the development agreements, I think that's, was my goal, you guys would bring it to us as a final product.
Yeah, I think, uh, and, and we discussed it internally in regards to, like, for me, I would like to see it early, uh, so almost when they wanna get started, so I could help them scope, that would help consultants to focus their attention. Um, a lot of times, they just look at the development and not looking at the road specifically, so, I'm thinking if I could hit it early enough on the front end, as it goes through the process, then I can understand, you know, the concept of what they're trying to develop through there. I think at the, where it was at when I got to, or, I was kinda further down the review process, and I thought, gosh, for me, it would be better if I could see it sooner.
Absolutely. I don't know if I want it to be the final product, we do have the final voice, but...
Yeah, I, well, you know, it's like everything, you need the data, you need everything collected before you can really look at it, and there's gonna be tweaks, depending on commissioners and...
Right, and I really hope that the I-Works, I'm thinking about how the I-Works will tie into the development, is gonna be beneficial, not just internally, but externally, too.
Absolutely. I-Works is a good tool. How does that tie in with the, I mean, I, I can't remember everybody's names unfortunately down there, but the software program that we, I...
Fix.
Yeah, Fix, thank you.
So I-Works has a module, every module costs money, I did the least minimum, three years ago, I did pavement and signs. Dan's finding out, when I told him I had I-Works, he was just like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, that's, that's a tool, that's a heck of a tool.
It is a tool.
I, I didn't have time to utilize it, and I wasn't smart enough to figure out how to utilize it, so...
Well, you just didn't know what you didn't know, but now...
I was trying!
We haven't.
We'll figure it out.
But there's...
We're putting everything in Fix, so, I mean, if there's some, a different way to do something, let's not wait years to get there, after we do all of it.
And you know, Fix is a yearly fee, so if it gets, and that was part of the Fix discussion was, if we decide to not renew the Fix contract, we get everything back that we put into it? I can't remember what the answer was, Jeremy would be, somebody to ask about that.
We'll get your contract.
But we, that was a big deal, we're not gonna use Fix for five years, and then all of a sudden, we decide to go somewhere else, and all of a sudden, we gotta start over again?
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
We want all our information back from you guys, that we've put in in the last five years, and, you know, that's an option with I-Works, as soon as Dan dwells in it a little bit deeper, but he's just, his desk looks worse than mine's right now, and his desk is three times bigger than mine.
It's a mess. Visitors are, are welcome, visitors are welcome. I just have to clean it spot off, so...
Just don't touch anything.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
We'll get there.
Um, one last thing, something to put in your brain bank again, remember the logging truck conversations we've had for the last few years? We got another one going on right now. Barker, they're logging DF Development, and they are dusting everybody out along Barker.
Where's Parker?
Barker.
Oh, Barker!
Between Roseberry and Highway, goes up to Barker Loop.
And I don't know what changed with those guys, 'cause they used to handle them, they used to water, and they used to do all that for us.
These, these people supposedly put down about six thousand dollars worth of dust abatement on a half a mile of Barker, it's gone.
Yeah, mine's gone, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's the amount of traffic, it's the speed, you know, and I know Dan's working on some BST treatment on certain roads, Barker, Barker's ready to pave, and I told this lady this this morning, I go, that road is built, have pavement on it, got a heck of a base on it, it's got basalt rock on it.
How, how long is the road? I mean, is that...
Well, the, the part in front of the houses is probably half mile.
You guys did three projects this year, I haven't seen what your, you know, plan is for next year, maybe we try and find some of these areas that make sense. I mean, there's areas in wagon wheel that people are complaining all the time to me, but...
That's, uh, you know, discussions that we're gonna have here internally, to talk about, um, you know, more of a, a large planning vision in terms for next year, 'cause I think if we could get it to a point where...
Mind you... Might need to find a microphone.
Uh, now, mind you, it's a, uh, it's a vision, so things change, um, so once we get a, at least a plan in place, people can see it, this is a plan to go off of, may, it may have to be shifted based on what happens during that year, but, uh, we're planning on, on, uh, discussing, uh, that, development of that plan here in October, before everybody gets started with, uh, uh, snow plumbing.
Well, depending on what happens with SRS funding, and the state funding, we're, at some moment in time, we're gonna have to talk about a levy and what that's gonna look like, and so what we're gonna need from you guys is your prioritizations, I mean, people need to understand what we would do with any kind of a levy fund. But I would see in the next couple years, we're gonna have to have this conversation.
Yeah, I, I, I need to talk, talk it over with the, you know, the internal staff, to get kind of a, an idea of, of what has happened in the past, and how we can use it in a more of a, a regional staging of how projects will come about, so...
Somewhere that should be on your tenure plan anyway, isn't it? On the L2 or whatever it is that you have to fill out, I don't know what the number of the form is, but...
Annual Financial Report.
Yeah.
We actually got a few knocked off the transportation plan this year, we've got some of the ones that I've had on the annual financial report for the last three or four years.
Good.
We can scratch off at least two, if not three, projects that are, finally...
Or, or they had been phased, right? They're a certain phase that was, you know, improved based on that. Things, things are moving in terms of, uh, checking those things off.
Okay.
He hasn't even seen the backcountry yet, so...
Yeah, it's, well, it's kinda not a good place to go in the backcountry.
Nobody can be in the backcountry right now.
Not now, yeah.
Okay, guys, be safe out there.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go on with our agenda, our next item, these are all action items, the first one is, uh, meeting minutes of September third.
And I did read that, um, I didn't have any problems with it, so I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of September third.
A second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then the next one is the conversation around, uh, going out for an RFP on that, the fairgrounds, and we did get some information from Allison, I know that Clearwater would like to bid on it, there may be other people out there that wanna bid on this proposal, and I think it is important that we hire somebody that will pull together some community meetings, and actually get the, you know, the conversation started about what people wanna see, once that road department is off there.
So, um, who's gonna write their P, scope of work, I guess?
I'll have to work with somebody to do that, I mean, I don't, I haven't done an RFP, but...
Haven't either.
Scott's gone for the next month, I would be thinking that, you know, so I'll have to work with somebody to figure out how to do that, but I thought it was important that we get this on there and get it out, because if, if we can use this, um, funds that we've already collected through tax collection to pay for this, and I think that that's a good use of those funds.
Well, and I think we could also use some of the 4H budget for that.
4H doesn't really have a budget.
Well, the Fair budget, I should say.
Um, you mean in Scott's budget?
No, in the Fair Board's budget.
Oh, okay, the Fair Board's budget, yeah, and if they have funding available for this, we'll certainly work with them on that. This is not just their, it's just not their area, this is that whole footprint, and there will be a portion of that, but this is the event venue for Valley County, so it totally goes outside of their oversight going on there, so it'd be a part of any community minute.
And the, the issue is, is actually writing the scope of work for an RFP, what you want them to do, and I don't have that ability, I'll admit it.
We'll work on it, make sure that I can get help from Arnie or...
We get started, and then we'll pass it around to different folks and see if there's anything that we're missing, but, uh, I'll make the motion that we begin the process for an RFP, for planning for the Valley County Fairgrounds Community Event Center, I don't know what you wanna call it.
And I will second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And this being the last item on our agenda, for lunch, we will adjourn and see everyone back here at one o'clock.